That's something that is not on the agenda. There were many applications for commercial building, site review, proposed construction, seven five hundred square foot building, one at six point four one state regardless. That's Matt thirty-four lot three eight service by the side of the tree through thirteen twelve four and eleven to the downtown business district and the SP shore. Signature Holdings LLC is the owner, that will be the application, technical services, legal technical, is the owner's agent. Now, we go with you as part of that?
Yes.
And we actually have a... Yeah, are you guys able to hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, he's off mute.
Can I see him? Oh, he's over there. Oh, he's up here. Can you do full screen?
No. He's on the second floor.
Oh.
But this is nine plus one.
Here he is.
Well, I'll take this for Steve, and if I cut out, Steve can help fill in any of the blanks for me there. I appreciate you guys being flexible, allowing me to do this via Zoom. The applicant has been very willing and working with us, so it's a seventy-five square, seventy-five hundred square foot building.
And, um...
Is he able to hear me now?
We got people...
Can you make a louder pitch from your computer? Amp the volume on your computer and see if it works.
Your display is only one is making sound, I want to be fine.
Yep, I've got it now at full volume. Anybody able to hear me now?
It's not your quality, it's, we don't have speakers on the other television.
Gotcha.
We don't?
Well, we can't hear them.
Don't come from over there.
The only one that's coming on is that one.
TVs don't have...
The one farthest away from us.
I can go hold the microphone over to him.
Carry the TV over here.
Can we put him on speaker by phone?
We'll just check to see if television is on.
I gotta do some stuff.
Well, I don't see a speaker on the TV. Is it?
See, is that a little better?
You want me to do the talking? I can. Then if I have questions, Henry can jump in.
Try it with him.
Absolutely.
Yeah. See the phone?
Let's try that, Henry. I'll call you on my phone. Let's see how that works. Yeah, I'll get done, mute his cellphone.
Ready?
Is it a little better? And you can send one down.
And you muted on your computer? Nope, nope. Disconnect from the TV, maybe?
Right, given that one more call there, I was muted on my end. Not sure where the feedback is.[124.61]
gave me a letter, there's no rear potential features on the site according to the main natural areas program. I think the project should be pretty straightforward. We are doing this as a non cluster subdivision. And we're going to resign the road to meet the minor road standards. Which means we'll have 150 foot radius versus 75 foot race allowed by private ways. It'll be a better looking road or meet the roadway requirement with for minor road. The only thing we won't do is we won't pave it. And later on in life, if he decides to pave it, petition town hall, that'll happen later on down the road back. We will do it to town private minor private way specifications except for pavement. So it'll be a private road until she decides to move forward with it. Otherwise than that, I think it's going to be a pretty straightforward project and obviously got to go through the check this before I come back from the board.
I had, I had no questions. Like I mentioned that you're aware that utilities have to be underground.
Correct. Yeah.
Paul, the only thing I'd ask is with your submission, just make sure that we get a a breakdown of cost estimates for the road by material and whatnot for butter, carder, bond, whatever served is going to be put in place.
Absolutely. Also maintenance on the road.
Yep.
You know, like homeowner or.
Maintenance agreement. Yep. Yeah, I don't really see the project being super complicated. Stormwater, obviously. Otherwise than that, I think it's fairly straightforward.
Any, any other questions by the board? Bring, bring us your plans.
Thank you so much.
Don't go in there.
Oh, no, it worked. It worked very well. Talk about this, right?
Not yet.
Why is it so complicated when you have an application complete? Why have it happened so quick for public area and so quick for doing that many group meetings of six months?
Well, no, the reason that, that we, we put those guidelines in place so that we didn't slow the process up.
Well, I think what I think in putting guidelines in that came up in six months, somebody has to push it for a month, still getting approved in months. So I think you're making the whole thing really complicated because you didn't make it six months. He said six days. It's still up to ask, push the application in respect to our clients. You guys can obviously approve it within sixty days.
Well, Paul, if you remember years ago, things just dragged on and I think everybody was. No, I think it was the applicant and we, so we wanted to make sure that things progressed on and it didn't look like we were sitting there holding everything up.
We may have gone too far with it.
Right. Because now it's really complicated. All the gearing approvals. Oh, yeah.
It also could be like they talked about, they went to the sidewalk and half of us weren't there. So if you have that long gap, though, if you approve it, so if you approve it and you have six months, things could happen on the property that we wouldn't have seen. And we approved it. So therefore you can, you know what I'm saying? So if you have a shorter window of time, you have less, less time to be, you know.
And it has been a year.
Things could happen.
For the last one, it was a year between sidewalks. So.
All right. Thank you much. Next item on the agenda. No, I have the agenda. Put it someplace.
Town planner's report.
Town planner's report. Yes, thank you.
Did you ever hear back from town?
I thought you, I thought you had.
I was in discussion there.
Yes, thank you.
You did.
The, after we had, we met with the selectmen on the 19th of April. And on the 26th of April, an amendment went into law without the governor's signature. We've tried to find out what the people who wrote the law, what their intent was. They don't know. They wrote the law. Don't, don't ask them to interpret what the law means. But it, it essentially.
A verbatim quote.
What's the amendment say though?
I wrote to the senator and he wrote back that it's his job to write the law, but not to interpret it.
Can you tell us what the amendment was, please?
Uh, hold on, I have it in an email.
Okay.
Stuart. So anyway, they referred us to Kate Dufour.
Kate Dufour at MMA.
MMA.
The, the amendment to the, to the law dealt with the various public hearings and boards that are controlled by it and, and what an emergency is. So I've asked MMA to give us an explanation of what constitutes an emergency and who decides what that emergency is. Because we're working on our own policy in terms of meetings. It would help to know, are we does the, do the board of selectmen make that decision? Can we make that decision? Who gets to decide what an emergency is? So I asked them and I'm just waiting for an answer back. Hopefully we'll get one. I, I, I mentioned it to Kate Dufour. I called, I called and I left a long winded message. Imagine that, me long winded, a relatively long winded message on her answering machine. And then I, I gave her the wrong email address. So I called her back to give her the right one and she picked up the phone. And she told me that they would send it up to the legal department. This was at the end of last week. So we're just waiting to hear back. And get some clarification on what the amendment means.
Wow. Who, who's in charge of the audio video zoom?
For the town. Who's in charge of the audio video town?
Is there someone in town hall? How can we get the sound to hear if somebody was on Zoom like happened? He does. Okay.
Okay.
So the remote control should be someplace because basically you could just turn the sound on to these two monitors and be able to hear better. These two monitors are off. That one's the only one that was on.
Yeah. And I, I set the mic up against the, the laptop thinking it would pick up. I, I don't know why, but it, I had, I had the volume on the laptop all the way up.
That's it.
I could, I could barely hear him sitting there.
Because you're streaming, you've connected your screenshot, you've screen shared to these monitors. So the monitors are actually what your sound is. And so you only have one sound monitor on, but you have three available to you. So if you had all three on, you'd be able to hear it appropriately. And why is the camera so based on us and not on the chair?
I have no idea.
Because we're the end and all I can see is us and not the rest of you.
There is a remote over there that the chair can control.
Because the chair should be on camera more than even though, you know, the chair, the chair is beyond camera.
Susan, I just sent you the citation.
Okay. Thank you.
Because I thought you were learning. I didn't know what it was.
Well, this came after.
Okay.
And so I just gave the answer from Trace Stewart.
Okay.
And I sent it to everybody else.
Thank you.
It was, it was an amusing answer.
Yes, but also too, since we've had a meeting, the numbers have, have gone wicked high.
They've gone up by 50% in the last week.
That's what I'm saying because we originally had an account of 100, we said, right? Or something like that. Well, I mean, that's changed. So I mean, under the art guidelines, we said.
I, but based on the meeting that we had with the selectmen, here we are.
Well, we'll see.
We'll, we'll find out. Yeah.
So.
Well, also too, also too, if you notice like tonight, right? We didn't have any other input like we always had from other Zoom meetings.
We had no, we had no announcement from the community come in and see anything or talk about anything like any of the others since, you know what I mean? Versus before they would have been there for us to talk to.
You know, plus the ability to see the maps and the diagrams and the graphics.
Well, we can if you bring your computer. I did.
But.
What I'm saying from, from my perspective, I have to visually, we talked about this before, visually I can't see that. So I have to bring my, on my computer and zoom it in so I can see properly. And hearing people speak is, you know, you've got the lovely fans. It's just more difficult to do and content outside. So I have to bring technology into technology to see properly to be able to zoom into things. And I think that's kind of, I mean, they're there. They're downloaded into the, into the town website, but I'm saying it's one of those things. It's just more conducive to go, okay, they can take a pointer and show it versus walking out carrying this, beginning to carry that. Cause I bet you the lawyer's speech is not, half of it's not on recording because she was sitting away from the speaker.
Unfortunately, that's, that is probably true.
I mean, Rick.
I have, I, I have no idea how the volume on any of the monitors works. I know that at my house, I've only been working with three monitors in an office for 10 years. And I finally found out that I could zoom in one particular. and I finally found out that I could zoom in one particular monitor. I didn't know I could do, there's a little button there, I never knew I could make it bigger. So I can, I can connect all this stuff together, but that's the, the extent of what I know about it.
So there's nothing stopping us too, getting up and going and looking at the plan?
No, and we've done it before.
Then we'd have to bring the microphone and go do it too as we're talking.
Well, I can also.
I don't need you to be frustrated with me, I'm just saying I find it to be silly. I think the whole conversation is silly, I think it should be allowed to be on Zoom, but that's just me.
Well, we're working on it. We're working on trying to get a definitive answer. That's all we can say.
I mean, if it works out, then we can do it great, but if it doesn't, then we got to figure out.
We're good, that's right.
As I said to the.
We've done the job, we have, so it's not necessary to get frustrated about it. We're talking about our own opinions.
Well, at, at any rate, that is everything that we have. Do you have anything for us, Lee J?
Certainly. As he smiled slightly. Speaking of legislature, LD 2003, which is the latest housing bill, has been signed into law, will be law in 90 days. There will be rulemaking that will go through the Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD, who will be spearheading that, that effort. Municipalities have until July of 2023 to amend our ordinances to address it. Basically, it is a law that now says that every house lot, doesn't talk about zoning, but every house lot shall be allowed to have two ADUs, accessory dwelling units, where there is an existing home on the property and up to four ADUs on a vacant parcel. So if someone comes in where there is a vacant parcel in a residential zone, they could put a duplex and two ADUs. We don't have the choice to dictate through zoning or density or anything. It, that is the law.
But those units have to be attached.
No, they do not. No, they do not.
Some accessory buildings do not have to be attached.
One, in the case where there's an existing home, one ADU can be located in the home or attached to the home, the second ADU can be a freestanding.
Can we restrict the size? Because we already allow ADUs in every place that has a residential.
We can restrict the size of an ADU, which the ordinance already does here, says that it cannot not be any larger than 50% of the square footage of the home or 800 square feet, whichever is greater. We cannot change or dictate setbacks, we cannot change or dictate density, we must allow those ADUs on any parcel where a house is allowed.
Lee J, what's the definition of an ADU as opposed to a tricked out shed or something like that? What's the difference?
They have not defined that yet, that will probably come through rulemaking, although I think we're in pretty good shape with our definition. I don't think that there's anything that says how to define an accessory dwelling.
Basically, going forward, we're pretty much going to be governed by how big a septic system is.
How much, how big a septic system they have to have. We don't dictate that, that's dictated by the state plumbing code and is generated, the size of it is generated based on the number of beds on the property.
So the land, you know, you can add a couple of units, the land has to be big enough to have a septic system, little hand and all that.
Correct.
The soils and all that.
Correct.
Under, under our current standards, those ADUs have to use the same septic and well.
Yeah.
Is that still the case?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's awesome.
That's going to restrict.
So the good news for us, and I haven't done a full assessment because it, some of the language, as, as Susan has mentioned with her situation, some of the language in this, in this legislation is very poorly written, to be honest with you, and still trying to interpret some of it. But here in town, part of what governs ADUs across the state is that if you have a comprehensive plan that is consistent with the state law and has a growth area, we do not, our plan, as I can tell, is not a consistent plan with the state law, which is not a no-no by today's standards, but it's not. And the state law says it should be in order to comply with this housing bill and/or have city water, city sewer, or some other type of system. And I, I'm using that word, that language myself, it talks about private systems, you know, private like gang systems or other types of sewer systems or water systems that might be available to the general public, which we are very limited in, if at all. So we probably actually do not qualify under this law to have to meet most of it, which is an interesting take on it. The other piece of this puzzle is that if someone wants to come in and do a, an apartment complex that would meet the affordable housing index for value of income to, income to rent ratio, and they're willing to basically rent control that for the length of the project, I believe it's a 30-year length, they are allowed, or they're allowed under the law, we cannot dictate that again, to come in at two and a half times the density of the zone in which they're located.
But they're still limited by septic.
Yes.
Water, so in the case of a rental, that's our magic cloak.
Well, if there is a magic cloak, but, but, but the problem, problem, the issue is, is that anybody can seek a variance of those requirements through the state and get variances on the septic system, on the lot size requirements for septic systems.
But we still don't have public water and we still, right, and we don't have public sewer, so that's going to automatically limit what you can do.
Well, it could if we don't have, if, if the site that the applicant's looking to put on can't yield enough portable water to service those units. But if they can, I mean, there's a lot of ifs in there, I wouldn't count on bad soils or lack of water holding these projects back.
If you can't count on bad soils holding the project back, why bother having, having any regulation at all? I can, I can put, I can put something on the, on the four acres out behind my house that are wetlands.
Well, I, again, I mean, any, anybody can go to the state and seek a variance in the design requirements. And that's not part of this law, they can do that today. This law though, really takes residential zoning and performance standards for residential development out of the hands of the local municipality.
So we just have to wait until the Supremes decide that, no, you can't take away home rule?
I'm sure there'll be someone challenging these cases.
There's probably somebody sitting down right now with a pencil writing it out.
I think they're kind of busy right now, they have a little, a few other issues on the dock, right?
No, I'm talking to state supremes.
State, state.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, I don't talk about the feds.
And what I'm going to be doing anyway, because, you know, we have SMPDC here, works with 39 municipalities, I'm going to be sitting down with a couple of the other planners from the region and going through this bill and trying to understand exactly what it says, because we're going to either have to write model ordinance for that or individual ordinances for every town based on their certain situations. Here, I think we're in pretty good shape. We may need to make some amendments because of the apartment complex issues that, that are in the law, but I think is the individual ADUs, under our ADU laws that we have in our ordinance, I think we're in good shape. We may need to make some minor adjustments to it to meet the intent of the state law.
Are there any apartment complexes in a rental?
No.
Duplexes.
No, complexes, he said complexes. Are there any?
12, 12, 12 units in a building.
No.
Great. No, but the Broad Water and Sewer of Portland Road, that would be a natural place to do that kind of building, just simply because it's already sort of there, but not quite. You would just continue on and bring it all the way up.
Correct.
Now, under this, what we were speaking of, is anything related to age related, like 55 and older?
No, no age restriction.
I mean, it's just, just, but.
So, so it's, there's no age restriction issues in it, it is, as far as the complexes, the allowance for apartment complexes go, it is income related, meeting the median household income under Maine State Housing Authority in every municipality. As it relates to the individual ADUs on property, there is nothing that says that they need to meet any affordable housing units. And also, if there is a growth permit in town, which limits the numbers of units, then the growth permit does not apply to ADUs.
And it doesn't for us anyway.
Right.
So do you, do you know what the purpose while this is, just to get more affordable housing or?
Well, I can't get in their minds, I mean, I think it was, it definitely was tailored towards affordable housing. I, I think the thought process is that the more stock you can put out there, you know, it's going to be more reasonably priced because it'll be more competitive. I, quite frankly, I see it as someone going, wow, I can get, you know, a couple of units on my property and lease them for 2,500 bucks a month.
Yeah, we offer cash in.
Right.
But it, more, more units doesn't mean more affordable.
Correct.
More urban areas, they're more expensive.
Correct. Certainly, we, and, and I don't think I'm speaking out of turn by any means, but SMPDC folks, we were not much in favor of this bill, simply because doing what it's doing is creating sprawl, it's encouraging sprawl, it's not discouraging it or suggesting that, that the, the higher density areas or the municipalities that have the services available are where that type of development belongs, but what it's doing is it's adding additional units to rural areas where longer commutes are going to occur, where.
More traffic.
Yeah, more traffic, more impact on sewer, septic systems where municipalities don't have systems available. There's a whole litany of issues that can be looked to, so it's, it's an interesting issue and only time is going to tell what the impact is going to be.
Like your fire, like your police.
Absolutely. All infrastructure, all.
What about your schools?
Armed surfaces, roads, more pavement. So quick question for you, so the ADUs, you can rent those, is that right?
Sure, yep.
Okay, so they don't have to go to family members or anything like that?
Nope.
If you look in Kennybunk, as, you know, you come through Kennybunk and I guess it's going out towards Route 9 past Hancock Lumber or just before you get there, you can see the kind of building that's going on, the duplexes and the affordable housing. They have the infrastructure because they have sewer and water, so they can make it happen. But, you know, the logical place I, I think for a rental, if it's going to happen, is up Portland Road, because it's already sort of there, but.
But they can't, they can't build up there, those aren't residential neighborhoods.
Right, it's only in zone, in areas where residential units are allowed.
Right, but going up towards where the, the seasonal cottages are, you couldn't build.
No, that's not, that's not a residential neighborhood.
Interesting.
That's all, that's commercial from log cabin all the way up to the benefit line.
DB1, DB2, yes.
Yeah, DB1, DB2 and BI.
Yes.
All the way up through.
So I'm like, where it would, would fit best.
Where it really makes sense, it would fit best to have, you know, you'd need a zoning change.
So anyway, I'll, you know, I'll be assessing this both for a rental as well as the rest of the region and trying to determine, in our particular case, what amendments might be needed by next Springs Town meeting to address the law.
So can you run out your woodshed for, for summer use?
We call them, we call them a small home, a tiny home, really tiny.
Will you get a definition of an ADU? Let us know.
Sure.
So you take your children when they're back for your grandkids.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have nothing else. Anybody else have anything?
I just have a question, have we heard anything about the, from the tenants people?
No.
Okay.
No, I think, you know, they, they got feedback from you folks, I think it was pretty positive feedback. I think what they needed to do now is go back and really start their heavy engineering design work that, that's needed.
Because I know they turned around, went tested, did a lot of testing over there.
Sure.
I mean, with, with well, like well, digging, digging, soil samples and everything else, because years ago, that was all tested for the different wetlands and everything else back in the 80s, 90s. I remember all that being done then, and that was all done through Dr. Faulkner, I mean, and before the Arundel Playhouse even came in. I mean, so I mean, they had all the.
I was just curious regarding anything, if they could start construction.
No, I mean, like I said, but they, they were busy there. And then I also heard too that there is a new light between Route 1 and Old Limerick Road there, that's supposed to be changed in that light to be possibly a left-hand, left-hand lane and everything else.
How about Holy Donuts? They still.
They're still working.
And they're working away.
They put a number that you can now can hire there. They've been on their website that they're hiring for Arundel now, it's on their site.
They have.
So that's good.
They, they have been finalizing their sign package with Jim and I, and I understand that it will be, I don't have any dates, but I understand it'll be fairly soon that they'll be opening.
I was curious, and I looked on their site and it said, you know, before it was hired for Inscarra, and now it has a rental in there for all their snacks.
Now their design on there, is it going to be a big donut? I mean.
It's a teal.
I, I, I don't know.
It's a teal sign.
Okay, I mean, I mean, it's a holy donut, so I didn't know if they had the blessing with the donut.
No.
Well, I mean, you never know, I mean, with the way religion goes today and everything else.
A second.
Okay, it is, what is that, seven?
Oh, 8:10.
8:10, okay. Thank you very much. We are enjoying.
We're just leaving the mic stand?
Yep.
And you take our, we leave.